Of the Board of Commissioners to order. Clark Hudson, would you do a roll call for us?
Will do. President Franklin. Commissioner Brooks.
Here.
Commissioner Colbert.
Here.
Commissioner Lot. Commissioner Pravat.
Commissioner Pravat will be absent today. She has let us know that.
Okay. Town Administrator Carol Richardson.
Here.
Public Works Director Darnell Bond.
Here.
Police Chief David Burse.
Here.
Town Clerk John Hodson, present.
We will rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. We'll move on to the review of the agenda, and I have one initial change to start off. But the business items are an annexation agreement, which we do not have one, so I'd like to just table that. Generator service contract, leave donation policy, an introduction of the budget ordinance, the budget amendment, and the personnel ordinance. Are there any additions, changes, objections to pushing the annexation agreement? Hearing none, we'll move forward with the agenda. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda? Is there a second?
I have a second.
Clark Hudson, would you call the roll?
Will do. President Franklin.
Aye.
Commissioner Brooks.
Aye.
Commissioner Colbert.
Aye.
Commissioner Lot.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you. Right, we will move on to reports. You okay? Start with the Arts Council.
The Arts Council, so we don't have anything.
Oh, sorry. Commissioner Lot has joined the meeting. For the minutes.
Okay, um, the Arts Council, we didn't meet last week, but we're going to meet the first Monday in May, and Darnell, Director Barnes will be meeting with us so we can discuss more details about the park and whatever other projects they want to work on, so.
What, sorry, what time is it? Is it here at Town Hall?
Yes. Seven, seven p.m. The first Monday of each month.
Sorry. Um, okay, we'll move on to Sir.
Okay, Sir basically had their month meeting last month. Pretty much, no activity.
Commissioner Brooks, events?
We met, we meet twice a month on Thursday at seven p.m. on Zoom, and all is going well with the plan for Marlboro Day. Like I said the last time, all the volunteers are very enthusiastic and ready to go. They're just trying to see how much money they have to have. They want to DJ and some other things, but we're meeting again this Thursday at seven.
All right. Thank you. Green Team report, I know that Commissioner Pravat is working on the cleanup. So I think that's the main focus. I know that some of the committee members have reached out about getting the garden going again, and Providence St. John's Church is coordinating to try to get some time for the garden. But they haven't met. Hearing. So we're gonna, Greenwell, I'm gonna skip over you so we can finish the town committees, and then we're gonna come back to you. Historic Committee met, I was, I think it was last month, and the Chair was here and presented to us that they meet quarterly, so they haven't had another meeting since then. Economic, this is sustainable communities, but I should say economic. Commissioner Colbert.
The Board for the Town Economic Development Work Group met last Wednesday, went over a couple of items in terms of repayment or reimbursement for businesses that submitted an application last year. We've been over setting a normal meeting cadence also of the first Monday, so we may have to de-conflicting it. We have some overlapping members, but we can talk to that. So the next meeting will be Monday, May sixth, at five p.m. It'll be a Zoom meeting. The tentative cadence is the first Monday, but we're gonna see how that works out with the first couple of. That meeting will be focused on setting the bylaws, setting the leadership of the committee, and also we each board member is charged with picking through and developing some priorities for strateg- strateg- strategization on what types of businesses and how we attract new businesses to pass the application.
Yeah. We're, we're gonna let Greenwell Consulting give us a legislative report before we go into the Commissioner Report. I believe we have someone. Hi, Jonathan.
Mayor, how are you? Our Commissioners. I think Leslie's on here too. August started. Thank you for letting us join you this evening. So we had over three thousand bills this legislative session, which kept us very busy. Again, it came down to the budget this year as a lot of, as we've reported before and in the last meeting. It was a sixty-three billion dollar budget that was passed this year. Again, again, versus the V, the extension of the session by the Governor kind of moved things along. He threatened to extend the session by ten days, and suddenly things got done down at the General Assembly. So they passed a sixty-three billion dollar budget. Now, the biggest thing this year, again, was dealing with the blueprint, the education funding, which they passed a slew of taxes on tobacco, which amounted to ninety-one point four million per year, which will increase that funding for education and it filled the gap that was expected in FY twenty-seven. So they do expect that that will not last because the increase on the taxes for tobacco will lead to folks maybe not using tobacco products as much, and that would decrease that. So we do expect iGaming to be front and center next year. Something that was debated up until the last minute with the budget because of the funding shortfall and the revenues that will come from iGaming. So we're keeping a close eye on that over the summer to see where it's going at, but we do expect iGaming next year to take that next step in moving, moving forward with iGaming at the Legislature in the state of Maryland. I'll let Leslie talk a little bit about some of the pieces of legislation that were passed and defeated. But also, thank you again, Mayor, for your activism down at the Legislature. Really makes a difference when you guys come down and testify, and just thank you so much for all your activism down in Annapolis. So, Leslie?
Thank you, Jonathan. Good evening, Mayor and Council. So I wanted to provide a brief overview on some of the key bills we monitored for the town this session. The first one I will be starting with is Senate Bill seven four seven, seven four seven slash House Bill one six five. This is the Local Auditing Reporting Requirements Bill. As you all may recall, when the bill was originally introduced, it had a number of provisions that the town was concerned about. Specifically, the twenty percent of police aid that could potentially be removed if you were to become late on the audits. I do, again, want to give the kudos to the town for coming up to testify on this bill and working with us really quickly to submit things. We were very successful in seeing our amendments included in this bill. They did remove the police aid from one of the penalties if you are late. And they also did allow for anyone prior to this fiscal year to submit their audits without the penalties. So those were two great successes from the bill as we move forward. There were also a number of bills that pertain to economic and community development, specifically regarding public safety. One is House Bill two twelve. This is a pilot program for noise abatement programs, and Prince George's County is one of the counties that was included for these pilot programs. So this is something for you all to consider if it is an issue in the town. The origin, the bill originally was introduced because of jurisdictions in Prince George's County having issues with the loud cars in the morning, so this is a bill to hopefully tackle those issues. They also did pass House Bill three six four, which is the stop sign monitoring bill. This is a Prince George's County pilot program. As you all may remember, we were working very closely with you all on this bill to submit testimony as well because they did introduce an amendment that would have limited the number of systems in the county to ten. So a lot of jurisdictions in the county were against this. So we did succeed, success in this, and it was changed to unlimited. So now municipalities will have more control on how many you may want within your town. So another bill to consider for public safety as we work in the interim. And one final economic development bill is House Bill three oh six, which is specifically for Prince George's County. And this bill will allow for a study to be conducted on technological innovation within the county, so another thing to look out for. So those were a few bills I wanted to highlight today. There were about four thousand bills introduced, and we are waiting for the Governor, the Governor to finish enacting the ones that were passed. So we will continue to monitor that and let you know if anything happens or any bills are vetoed. And lastly, before I do conclude, next week, please do expect to see our annual ninety-day report in your emails. This will go more into detail on the other initiatives we worked on for the town and bills that we think you all should look into during the interim. So I'll stop there and open it up for any questions.
Thank you, Leslie. Do you guys have any questions?
No, thank you. Look forward to seeing the report.
Thank you so much, guys, for all your work on our behalf during session and outside of session.
Thank you.
We will move on now to Commissioner Reports. I will start off, I will start off by letting y'all know, and you already know, Treacher Lot, that I signed our audit engagement letter, so that process is getting started. We have been meeting with state and county representatives about economic development in the town of Upper Marlboro, and we've been having some really good positive conversations about that. I've attended a few sort of events. We attended Soil Conservation Dinner. We were acknowledged on their program. We were acknowledged Eagle Harbor's groundbreaking for their stream restoration project. Been to some Marlboro Day meetings, hosted community conversation. Commissioner Lot and Commissioner Colbert also joined that. And I have been nominated to be the Treasurer for PG CMA, so that's kind of exciting. I'll tell you guys about that. And we hosted MML here. Commissioner Pravat was part of that visit. I think that's it. Mr. Burke? I just, I just like to tell you guys stuff I did while I'm here because I don't always get to tell you other times.
Um, some things already mentioned, mainly the Town Economic Development Work Group meeting. Goals and cadence of meetings for that. I attended the County Council's Planning Housing Economic Development Work Session last week. And, uh, provided some testimony on behalf of the town to get funding, a portion where we would be kind of, where we were sitting in that meeting got to another meeting, so I didn't have the opportunity to do that. Or another opportunity to speak for them. As you mentioned, attended the.
I don't have too much, but I did attend the community conversation this Saturday with the Mayor and Commissioner Colbert. And I'm actively trying to determine what projects we're gonna work on with the event, with the Arts Council Committee, and that's all I have.
All right. We will get to business then. And we're starting with the generator services contract, and we should say what page.
So, but can I just ask before we can start with that, have, as the attorney, the town attorney, many of us should come up with a generic contract.
That's what this is? That's what this is.
Okay.
Yeah. So the, what we're looking at is the town attorney's generic contract. And the question is, are we, we approve this contract and sign it with Cummings? Cummings Sales and Service for Generator? If you are a resident, I don't know how many people are online, just raise your hand if you're online. And you can wait to come up until we get to that point, if you have comments. Yeah, well, I just want to make sure people are queued in line while the Commissioners discuss, so we will get to the raised hands. Do you have any?
This is just the boilerplate contract, it does have the actual terms for, in the end?
So I'm. Yeah.
I think it's service.
Right. It's the boilerplate, and I know Clark Hudson, I think, was working on this with her, or were you working on it? Carol, I think it was.
No.
Okay, so Clark Hudson, do you want to kind of give an overview on the boilerplate and the process with it?
Yes.
The contract?
Yes, she basically is writing contracts, generic ones for the town, that basically we will be able to use going forward with all of our contracts to make it somewhat simple. So what she's provided is the basis of it, and there's still some things that we still have to work out. So, I mean, we still have to, you know, go through it, you know, if paying an hourly rate, including requirements to bill in one tenth hour increments. I mean, there's still some answers that need to be worked out based upon what has been provided to us by Cummings. But for the most part, this is gonna be our generic contracts going forward for the future.
And so where it's highlighted, it may change based on the type of contract, so that's what the highlights are.
That is correct.
So it's more of, like, we'll fill in the blanks if we're gonna sign it with Cummings, but also let's make sure everyone sees a whole range of options. Do you have? Any comments?
The aggregate insurance should be two million.
Page, page.
Uh, page nineteen, the aggregate insurance should be at least two million dollars. Then, um.
Sorry, can you point to where you're watching?
About three, four. Mm-hmm. Uh, my, uh, current, the aggregate for each current and one thousand.
Add, add, add.
It should be two million here.
Oh, not here.
There should be a. Actually, I need time to actually look at it a little bit more closely. I'm not prepared to vote on this tonight.
How much time do we have with Cummings? Because we can vote at the work session if we don't have time.
On the thirty-first.
Of this month?
Of May.
Of May? Oh, it'll be, I'll look, I'll look it over. You'll have it quicker than, it's probably not much, but I just.
Well, we have to, we have to vote on it, so it's whether we vote at the work session.
So what are we voting on? Is this particular contract good to go the way it is, or?
Yeah, we, before I sign a contract, the Board has to vote on that contract.
No, we need the contract, so the vote is, we need to move forward with the contract, definitely, but I'm talking about this.
You, you all, you all have to vote on the thing I actually sign.
Okay.
Yeah.
So I'm just a little, I haven't looked at it to really look at the details to see, do we have a thirty-day out? Do we have, I see it's at least thirty days prior to written notice of the cancellation. You have?
No, I, I, I agree with Commissioner Lot, if we have it till the thirty-first. First can we, but, and I have reviewed this and it's going on at the work session.
That's what, I was gonna say, um, sorry, Town Administrator Peter Richardson.
Well, there are two things.
Okay.
And, yeah, you want time to look at this, but it's whether is this acceptable to you all at the boilerplate.
Right, yes.
And then, and then also, it, the attorney will tailor it for this particular vendor.
Then you vote on that one, but you gotta start with the boilerplate first.
Right, right, exactly. But, um, so with the template, it should allow whoever is Darnell filling out the contract or whomever to manipulate it just by inputting the information from the current proposal. And then if you have additional proposals, you know, first of all, after, you don't sign it first. It goes to the vendor first. The vendor signs it, you get it back, and then you execute. So it's a, it's just a little process that we can work on that. Go ahead.
That was sort of one thing I wanted to point out. I agree, I do need more time to look at this as well. Just sort of all, I think. But it is quite a bit different. And they will, I'm pretty sure they will want to send this to their.
Right.
So we don't want to run into that where them reviewing it pushes us outside of this one.
Okay. So.
Can I just say?
Yes.
That once you send it to them for signature, because they have the time first, right? So they have that opportunity to present it to their legal team to, to look at it, so it won't throw your timing off because you've already presented it. So you'll still be okay.
So I'm just logistically, because our meetings are May fourteenth and May twenty-eighth. So. I think, like, we need to, we need to sign it, or we need to approve it before the twenty-eighth, but if, we need to send it to them before the twenty-eighth. So it, how long are they gonna need? We, I guess we could send it to them how it is, but then we'd have to send them any changes we have.
No, we don't want to do that. I think we should, we should, we should email you of what our changes should be, and then you can take it from there.
That's, if everybody emails me their changes, by what date do you think?
Just a week.
By this, today?
Twenty-third.
If, but if everyone can email, yeah, if everyone can email me their changes by the thirtieth, and anything I have, I will forward on to staff to address, then what we'll do is, because it, the reason I'm logistic-ing is if we're going to vote at the work session on the fourteenth, we need to announce that tonight, and Clark Hudson needs to do different paperwork. So let's plan to vote on the boilerplate on the fourteenth, and possibly to vote on the Cummings. But probably we won't have the Cummings ready, but we can put both of them on the agenda for the work session and table it if we have to. So there will be a vote at the work session on the fourteenth regarding the boilerplate contract and the Cummings contract. Any other comments on this before we take public comment? And Clark Hudson, do you need another minute to get that all jotted down, or you're good?
I wrote it all down already, and I'll work with the town attorney on getting it prepared.
Okay, so we'll take the public comment now.
All right, first I have Joe Urclay. Joe?
Uh, yes, this is a, for maintenance of, uh.
I'm sorry, can you just state your name, state your name and street for the record, please?
Uh, Joe Urclay, Old Marlboro Pike. As this is for maintenance of generators, is this for the town generator or for the portable generators?
The town generator.
Right, thank you.
Patty?
Um, I, I just want to say that it seems like it's.
I'm sorry, can you just? Can you just say your name and?
Oh, Patty Calacott, Church Street. I, I just want to make note that there were two votes taken at the last work session, and now you're planning on taking two more votes at a work session. Is there a reason why we can't suspend it for two weeks and make these town votes at a Town Hall meeting where you know citizens are and they are allowed to talk?
So anytime we, first of all, anytime we vote, citizens are allowed to talk, whether it's a work session or in a regular meeting. Our meeting rules and procedures allow for voting at a work session as long as we have advertised it well in advance. Government is slow, but we don't need to make it slower. So when we have a contract that needs to be executed so the generator can be maintained, we just, when we have contracts that need to be executed, delays can be expensive, and it's inefficient not to use that time when we have a problem.
Can I also say this is a part of life safety, so we don't need to drag it out. We need to stay on schedule.
The, the template is an emergency? The template is an emergency?
Not the template.
So what we, we're gonna, we're not gonna get into the discussion. If you could return to comment, we have a procedure for voting on work session. We have reasons for doing it. If you would like to provide a comment with your last minute and a half, you may do that.
Yes, I'm very uncomfortable with the town voting at work sessions. It's not supposed to be a normal thing, and it's becoming normal.
Thank you. All right. Do we have any other public comment?
No, there's only the only two.
Right. Is there a motion to table the generator service contract or vote to the work session on May fourteenth?
So.
Will do.
Second was from, would you call the roll for us, please?
Clark Hudson?
Aye.
Commissioner Brooks.
Aye.
Commissioner Colbert.
Aye.
Commissioner Lot.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll move on to the leave donation policy. That's on page thirty-two. So we talked about this last time. We have a couple of employees that are currently using this so that their paychecks are not short, and so I'd like to get a policy in place for us to be following. I don't know if you guys have any comments, questions? We, there was one point of discussion internally and the, the last meeting, which is, like, how this logistically happens? Like, does it go into a bank? Does someone donate forty hours of leave to a person, and then they can pull from that forty hours? Or does someone donate the hours at each payroll?
I would comment about that. So Commissioner Brooks brought up last time that, um, we should put it in a bank. But I personally don't agree with that, because if I was employed somewhere and I wanted to give Commissioner Brooks my leave time, I wouldn't want it to go to somebody else. I wouldn't. If I wanted it to go to this person in particular, I would want it to go to that person in particular. But ha- having it in a bank means that anybody can pull from it. And I, and I think that's my choice who I wanna give my time to. So I think that that's something that we should look at a little differently, because what if I don't, I mean, what if I don't get along, I'm just talking about me hypothetically, what if I don't get along with everybody? And I got chief that I wanna give my, my leave to, sign to, I think I should be able to pick who I give my time to, because it's my money.
Well, with the leave bank, I mean, the way I meant to say this, every, whoever wants to put into the leave bank should put into it. Not, you have to put into it.
No, no, not that you have to, but I'm saying if I'm giving of my time, my time, I'm just trying to make.
I just thought of him, because I think he was in the middle of explaining how the leave bank works.
You know, like, difference, every, whoever wants to join the leave bank, every pay period, they put in three to four hours. Whoever the leave is.
Who's putting it in, hold on. We, or?
No, who, it's right here, it says only full-time employees can do this.
Okay, the way of the leave bank works, basically, is that, after talking with our contractors, is that anyone who wants to put leave in the leave bank can, and you put in a certain number of hours each pay period. And then anyone who puts money into the leave bank can draw leave, or money, puts, leave into the leave bank, can draw leave from the leave bank up to a certain amount.
Right.
So it's not, it's more, if you're contributing, you can use it, but there's a limit, so it's not getting completely depleted by one percent of it.
Right, so can you, can you, okay, so if I put ten hours in there, is that my max, because I put ten hours in there?
Well, there's more.
I'm just, I'm just, right, and like, if I put ten hours in that leave bank, is that my hurdle point? What would be my hurdle point?
Well, we would have somebody else with twenty. So let me tell you my thoughts, because this is why, this is why my thoughts are my thoughts. Administratively, there's this, well, these questions, tracking all of this stuff. Administratively, I think the easiest thing to do is at the payroll, I'm short this much leave. This person has told me they will donate me leave. They fill out a form that's like this form here. It says, I'm donating person this many hours of leave, because that's what they need to make this payroll. And then that's it. Form every time. It is a little more work for the employee, but it's less tracking for the.
I agree with that.
Definitely, without the leave.
Yes, I agree with that.
No, I like the leave thing.
Because that's what we do.
Right, so I like all these other ideas. It's just like, right, administratively, when I'm thinking about how our procedures are being implemented and working, and when I'm thinking about when we had this gap without a town administrator, how all those things were, you know, let me catch this, let me catch this, let me catch this, this is one more thing to catch. Whereas if you have a pay period by pay period approach, no one has to catch it. It's just there.
Makes sense, so that makes good sense. It's, it's less stressful, because if I'm donating this chief.
I mean, I, I like the idea. I just feel like.
That was just a solution, I mean, I didn't know.
So, so we have, we, okay, so we're gonna hear from our staff.
So, I, I understand what you're talking about, so let me give a hypothetical. If an employee goes over their two hundred and forty hours of vacation leave, they use it, they're fine. If they don't use it, they lose it.
Right.
So then in that case, you could donate five, ten, fifteen hours to the leave bank.
Oh, that's a good idea.
Where they could sit there, as opposed to you losing it, but if you need it in the future, you could draw from it yourself, because we just have to keep track of the leave bank, because sick leave, you don't get anything for sick. But if you go over your two forty.
On vacation.
On vacation, you could say, I can't use it all by the end of the year, or I use up all my vacation. So you could either pay me out, but if the payout amount is more than what is required in the handbook.
Yeah, there's a limit.
You can donate the extra leave, and it may only be five or ten hours, like you were saying, so it's not gonna be, somebody's gonna give thirty, forty hours, it might be five or ten, and then it goes into the leave bank, so then somebody else could use it in an emergency.
That's not a bad idea, but administratively, like she said, it's about tracking.
Right, but that's separate.
Well, let's hear from all the staff, because, like, I'm just telling you my opinion, right?
That's a good idea.
It's our job to consider everything and make a decision, so.
Well, that's a good idea, though.
We'll go.
But can I ask one question?
To get back, oh, for you, um, so, like, in my job, we have use or lose, we can't do that. So here, can, I, I'm not familiar with, um, can't think of what the handbook says, but so you can actually get paid out at the end if you decide.
One time.
One time.
And it has a, a, a dollar limit, okay.
So let's say if it's a thousand dollars. So if I have thirty hours and twenty hours gets me to the thousand.
Seems to have.
I still have, I still, I'm gonna lose it, but if I put it in the leave bank, and somebody needs it, or if I need it later, I could.
You could take it, sure.
I could push it, and I could get it back.
Okay.
That's the bank, uh, which is separate from me giving somebody a straight leave, donating them ten hours or whatever.
Right.
So it's two different things.
That's not a bad idea, though, too, so no one loses their, their hours after.
Administrator Richardson.
So I think there's another option, too, and my thing is trying to do it in the most efficient way possible. And, you know, if someone wants to donate leave to another person, that, however many hours that is, it should just simply be put on that person's payroll. And then all you have, you don't have to then, each pay period, keep putting in forms, because once you put it on that person's payroll and take it off others, they're gonna use it just as if they had it originally. You, you do a form of initial time, but this, every pay period, you're opening the door to, you know, I think as, as simple as possible is the best way to do it, and I think, um, you know, if a person donated a certain number of hours to somebody else, that's what they want them to have, you know? Um, but this, every pay period, you're just creating another administrative burden that you don't have to, from my perspective.
My concern with that is, then if the person doesn't use it all, then they have somebody else's leave for it. There's no tracking on that. Um, so that's my concern with that.
Well, there would be a, a document initially wanting to, to say, such and such has donated this number of hours.
But how do they get it back if the other person doesn't use it?
Well, I think you can put something in there to say, you know, if it's, I think there was something in there, if it's not used within, um, a certain amount of time.
Ninety days. But I did see that, that's number thirteen.
Thirteen.
Boy, you receive.
Okay, so six months, so that's in there.
Um, sorry, Di- Director, oh, sorry, go ahead.
So, if, if the leave bank is there, and you can finish how much we want to, I agree, we should have a say so on who we want the leave to go to, because I don't wanna give my leave to someone that's abusing their leave constantly.
Right.
So if that's the way, if that's not gonna work, then, yeah, because I don't wanna give my leave to someone that's constantly abusing their leave, that wouldn't be fair.
Right.
Well, you wouldn't give it to them, because you'd be like, I'm, I'm gonna keep.
Well, but if it's in the, if it's in the bank, what is the, the factor for that?
Someone has to approve, I think, basically, you know, hours coming out of the bank, or whoever's administering the bank, and I'm sorry to cut you off, but whoever's administering, or, you know. Person has been, you know, making request or whatever, if there's a beast factor there, someone should have oversight of bank hours. To be able to allocate it to whoever, even at whatever time, like, it's not gonna be a system thing necessarily, there has to be some human interaction.
Yeah, right, it is, yeah.
Yeah.
No, go ahead, because we, we wanna hear from Director Bond, but if you have more questions.
Well, not necessarily a question, but a comment. Um, one, thinking of a hybrid approach, where, to Chief's point, that there's, you know, a situation where someone has maxed out their leave, and they're not gonna use it all by the end of the year, to put it into a bank. So if there is a one-to-one, you know, using this form or whatever mechanism it is, one-to-one, this person has agreed to donate their, their leave to me, maybe it's sensitive situation, you don't wanna explain everything that's going on, but you have a, you know, friendship or whatever with someone in the, in the, they've agreed to do so. If, if there's an option to do both, have the option, have the bank that's there just for general purpose, and again. Uh, or if the bank isn't, you know, flush with donated hours to someone else, I might go to Karen and say, hey, Karen, there's only two hours left in the bank from everyone else, or whatever, but I need eight, I need a full day or whatever. Would you mind donating me the extra six or, there's some type of hybrid approach.
I think everything could be on one form, that's one-to-one transfer or donation to the leave bank.
Yep.
All be on one.
Yeah, yeah, I think that's, that's a good.
All right, just one more.
Yes.
One more point, uh, to item number one in the policy, where it says, uh, only full-time employees who, like, if it should be that, or the employee, I don't know if the person has been in consideration for, uh, caregiving situations, if someone has a parent or a child, or someone of some type of dependent that is very.
So there's, there's two pieces. The first is that we felt this should follow whatever our sick leave policy is, and I don't know if we went in and changed it based on our sick leave policy or not. The other piece is that, because we're smaller than fifteen people, we don't actually have an FMLA requirement. And I think the lawyer would prefer we tie it to our sick leave policy, because we don't wanna be creating, like, an FMLA when we don't have an FMLA. Um, even though we wanna be, we wanna be accommodating people with this system. Um, she's concerned about the legality of that. But I wanna let Director Bond make it.
I love both ideas, the leave bank and, uh, the one-to-one donation. My thing as far as the leave bank is, if we all know how ADP is, so what is going to be, one, what is going to be the method of tracking the leave bank?
Right.
Um, I do like what you say as far as, you know, the use or lose, if you want to, uh, send that to the leave bank. Um, but I think it should also be, you know, if you choose to donate to the leave bank, you don't really get a say so in who will go to, so. Think about that at that time, and also, me personally, I, I haven't heard of you donate leave, it has to be your personal, because is there a way for it to be your sick leave? Is there a way to have that option?
No, no.
The leave is not compensable, so you can transfer.
Right, so if you leave a job, they don't pay you out for sick leave, they only pay you out for vacation that you've already accused.
I was just thinking, it's a lot of, you know, we don't like to do this for, you know, medical.
Okay, so it sounds like we have, we're gonna table this vote as well and bring this information back, um, to work on the policy more, and then we'll discuss it, have a discussion at the work session, and hopefully vote on something. I agree, okay. All right, so is there a motion, oh, sorry, we're not voting, but we still should take public comment. Is there any public comment on this?
I see no hands raised as of right.
Seeing none, I will ask if there's a motion to table the leave donation policy to abort discussion on May fourteenth.
So move.
Is there a second? Commissioner Colbert seconded. Clerk Hudson, would you call the roll?
Will do. President Franklin.
Hi.
Commissioner Brooks.
Aye.
Commissioner Colbert.
Aye.
Mr. Lot.
Aye.
Motion carries, thank you.
All right, we will move on to our introduction. Um, so we're gonna start with the draft ordinance twenty twenty-four oh one, which is the FY twenty twenty-five budget. Clerk Hudson, would you take it from here?
Will do. The reading consists of ordinance twenty twenty-four dash zero one, session, regular town meeting, introduced, introduced April twenty-third, twenty twenty-four, date enacted May the twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-four. Effective date will be June seventeenth, twenty twenty-four. An ordinance of the commissioners of the Town of Upper Marlboro permitting and adopting the budget for the Town of Upper Marlboro for the fiscal year beginning July first, twenty twenty-four, and ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five, fiscal year twenty twenty-five. Establishing the various town tax rates for fiscal year twenty twenty-five, including a vacant property tax rate, and setting the compensation for employees and officers, and to establish certain procedures for reviewing and amending same as more particularly set forth during. So before you, you now have the budget ordinance that has been prepared by President Franklin, town attorney, and myself. And this now includes the numbers as well. President Franklin?
Thank you. Um, just on the numbers, so you're all aware, we got new revenue numbers on Tuesday last week. Um, so.
Can you highlight what were the new revenue numbers?
So you, you have, the commissioners have a detailed, you have something here. The commissioners have a de- detailed budget with new revenue numbers. Your revenues are actually in the one with the teal, um, as of March. Um, I made estimates based on the new revenue numbers between what coming in and, and getting this together. I have not sat down and talked about it with the accountant. So these numbers are here, they're introduced, but they could change after discussion with the accountant. Um, so that's your preface. Commissioners have, the yellow draft is the, the budget numbers for twenty twenty-five, um, but I have been working on it and making changes al- already. So, um, those detailed line items are shifting as we find new, new expenses as they're coming up. Um, Director Bond has to take down a bunch of trees that we didn't realize, so, you know, just that kind of thing, and, and trying to figure that out for next year. Does that's the deal? Does anyone have any questions?
I do, I have two.
Yes.
Um, first, I would like to start seeing, like, a quarterly report from accounting, which would be our actual versus our spending, to kinda help us, so going forward, when we're saying that we need to vote on some kind of contract or whatever, we know exactly where we are, instead of just voting on contracts and stuff and not knowing how much money we have in the budget allocated for that particular thing.
This is here, but anytime you want the detail on it.
Right. Okay, so, I mean, like, I think that we all should see that on a regular basis, a quarterly report, just giving us, showing us what we have and what we actually spend, or what we budgeted and what we actually.
Yes.
What was budgeted for and what, what we're actually spending, the actuals. And then I see here that we have, in the yellow, not on the teal, but on both, we have a transfer from reserve. So this is saying that we have ARPA funding, still?
The transfer from reserve is exactly equal to the remaining ARPA funding, because all ARPA funding has to be, the word? Encumbered or by, there's a word for it, by the obligated, thank you.
Obligated.
So by the end of calendar year twenty twenty-five, so whatever's left in ARPA, because ARPA lives in the reserve, it has to come, the transfer from reserve is just the ARPA, it has to come out and be spent obligated.
Okay, obligated on specific projects or on what's the say?
There is a separate sheet that y'all will be getting that shows how it's obligated.
Okay, okay, because that, that's what we didn't have anything.
We didn't, we don't have anything left that's not.
What were they accounted for?
Uh, that's not.
Obligated?
It's, there's like a, there's a sheet, Todd and I have been working on updating that sheet.
Okay.
And making sure that it's all obligated, and obligated versus budgeted versus accounted for. It's all.
Right, that, when I look at that, you can't put some reserve.
Right.
And I see ARPA.
Right.
And when I say this ARPA report, I'm afraid the second line is almost like a grant. Whereas when I think of reserve, it's like money we have in the bank, that's, it, it's two different things.
So, for the reason. So, for the reason we did this is that the ARPA, we, we actually brought the ARPA in as a grant when the money came in. But once the money was in our accounts, we put it in reserve. So these other grants, we draw down on the grant and only if we account for the revenue as it comes in, as we draw down on it. But with ARPA, we were just given that clump of revenue. And so, and instead of it being, in the revenue column, it's just there. So we've been tracking it on a separate sheet and doing our ARPA reporting and then just doing a transfer from reserve for the ARPA. I don't, I mean, that's just how we've been doing it for the past thirteen years.
From my understanding and, you know, how they, they wanted it done, you want to have a clear delineation with ARPA. So then my question becomes, in terms of our reserve, where is that reflected? Do we have any reserve other than ARPA?
Right. So the reserves aren't part of the budget because we're not spending that. So they're, um, when you look at your, your report on page nine, 10, reserve is kind of, eh, cash in the bank, it's kind of not cash in the bank.
It makes it look like in one of the balances, you got, you have full-time reserves.
Yes. I know.
You want to understand?
Right. It's just that, so how we've been doing the ARPA accounting for three years, and I kind of don't want to change that philosophy, but we can't. But what, what our accountant and I had talked about is actually, cause, um, actually, I think this was in 2020, that we voted on this sheet that says, here's what we're going to spend ARPA on this year, here's this year, here's this year. There have been shifts and changes in that based on what actually worked and what didn't. And so the accountant and I have been working on a revised version of that with the numbers in it. And then what we're going to do is put it, you know how the budget, when the budget uh, ordinance is done, it actually has this detailed and it has the CIP and it will also have that ARPA. And the board will adopt the whole thing. Um, but he's doing the ARPA reporting right now, so he wants to finalize that and make sure the numbers are finalized. Do that. So that's how it'll be accounted for.
Okay.
So it, it probably was clunky to start with. I just don't want to change the clunk at the last. Right. Cause it's about to be done. Anything else on the FY 25 budget? And I want to take public comment on the FY 25 budget too. So ARPA was, it's the American Recovery Plan Act, and it was in 2021, 2020. Um, and that was during COVID, and it was direct funding from the federal government to municipalities to spend to weather the COVID emergency. So it.
The losses in revenue.
Losses in revenue, co- extra costs, like we bought COVID supplies with it, that kind of thing. But it doesn't come again. It's just, it was a one-time thing and, um, I know National League of Cities is working with the federal government to try to say, hey, you know, this worked. Here's some of the great projects that people were able to do with this that make them more resilient for any kind of future, uh, emergency. And so you should do something like this again, so.
Okay.
How much did we get?
Six hundred? It's like six, it's not exactly six hundred. Right. Yeah. So for anyone who didn't hear that, that's an important point. It was based on population. So the lower your population was, the less you got. The higher your population was, the more you got. Um. The benefit of getting less is the accounting and the reporting is easier, but. All right. We have some hands raised. Do you guys have, did staff or commissioners have anything before we take public comment? All right. We will take, oh, sorry. Yes.
Just breaking out utilities, um, for general government and public works, because I think we need to have a clear, we need to put utility into combined.
Oh, you did raise that. And I, we want to do water versus.
Water and electric.
Electric.
Because it allows us to track more.
Yes. I'm sorry. Cause I meant to do that and I did not.
Do we use, right now, Director Bond, do we use, uh, Energy Star to track like what our Energy Star rating is?
So that's why I have a 5480 and we're on 7350. That's all.
Okay. I will get that. I've already made adjustments on that. Here, do you want mine where I just wrote on it? But just give it back, so I'll make sure I do it. All right. So we will take public comment on that now.
I have Patty Calacott.
Thank you.
Yeah. Where can I get a copy of the line item of the budget for 2025?
So we will be publishing new line items before the May work session. Yeah. And yeah, there's the, the ones from the past session, the, the ones from the past work sessions, like there have been draft line items every time.
Well, they're continuing to change, and I'm just wondering where the current one, the most recent one is to look at because they continue to change.
We, we have copies here. If you, um, email info at, and, and request it, they'll send you the draft from today, but it will be different in May.
Okay. Why was, I, I'm just wondering why it wasn't published in the packet?
Because, um, the spreadsheet that I work on is extremely messy and we were working up till five o'clock on Friday and it was not in any state to be published in the packet. So it, it's just a matter of dealing with changing revenue projections coming in and, and working with it.
Okay. Well, May is, is getting very close to the time where you're going to have to adopt the budget and it'd be nice to have eyes on it and know where we are.
Like I said, if you email info or clerk at and request it, they will send it to you.
Thank, thank you.
Anyone else?
I don't see any other hands raised.
All right. Then we will move on to the introduction of draft ordinance 2024-02, FY 24 budget amendment. Clerk Hudson?
Will do. Ordinance 2024-02, session, regular town meeting, introduced April 23rd, 2024, date enacted May 28th, 2024, effective date, June 17th, 2024. An ordinance of the commissioners of the Town of Upper Marlboro adopting and approving amendments to the fiscal year 2024 budget as adopted in ordinance 2023-03.
All right. So this, um, is our budget amendment. Um, let me make sure I'm pulling it. So what in your, your budget line item for the amendment, you're going to see the changes. And that's the way that is set up. Um, if you take a look at the teal that you guys have in front of you, it's going to show you where either more money or less money is coming in, um, and more money or less money is going, going out. Uh, the biggest thing that's kind of shifting is going to be that if you look at the, um, expenditures, you're going to see, like I was talking about, there's these trees, they've got to come down. General government budgeting is going down from original budget and, and public works is going up. Page 46. So there's both.
No, we have this picture here?
No, that's for something else. We'll get there. Um, but there are, I don't know how many trees. Three.
Over here is roughly four or five. Over there, it's just, it's a whole patch of land.
So we need to put more money in ju- uh, public works budget to do the public works work. So that's kind of the biggest change. Everything else is kind of shifting around with salaries and, uh, whether I guess right on whether the revenues are going to come in higher or lower. So again, after my conversation with the accountant, you know, the numbers could change on the revenue side. Um, I don't think we need to make a lot of changes on the expenses side, which would allow us to transfer money into reserve. Any questions on that? All right. Um, any questions from the public or comments from the public?
I do not see any hands raised.
All right. Hearing none, we will move on to ordinance 2024-03, personnel introduction. Clerk Hudson?
Will do. Ordinance 2024-03, session, regular town meeting, introduced April 23rd, 2024, date enacted May 28th, 2024, effective date, June 17th, 2024. An ordinance to amend ordinance 2023-04 to reestablish and change certain aspects of a personnel system with certain guidelines, pay grade, salary standards, and procedures for the employees of the Town of Upper Marlboro.
Um, any questions?
Yeah. Why are we, why are we updating this order?
So we're not. Are we? No, I, we did make changes. We had to change, I think the actual, the only change this year is that the foreman of public works was in the wrong pay grade. After we did the assessment last year, we realized that and we didn't change it. Um, so we need to change that. Were there any other changes, Clerk Hudson? I'm trying to remember. I think it was just accepting last year's changes.
Yeah. Just accepting last year's changes and going ahead and changing a pay grade.
Yeah. I think that was in the budget. That's in the budget.
Shouldn't it be in the whole?
We'll, we'll talk about it at the work session. Cause we're past that. Huh?
Shouldn't it be in, what are we doing?
The hiring is in the budget and I forgot to, the hire, the hiring, the authorized, authorized staffing levels, they're in the budget. Um, and what chief is, is asking is, he wanted to, there's like a line for like, if we have an annexation and more money is coming in, then we'll authorize these. We could, we may authorize these positions.
Code.
And like a second code person, cause.
Do all of, do all of these, all, did all of, um, the staff, uh, positions get, get, um, posted somewhere so that, you know, were they, were they posted somewhere? Because every job has to be posted legally.
When we're hiring.
Yeah. When we're hiring, but are we posting them somewhere?
When we're hiring, our jobs, yeah, we, we have to post for 30 days. That's, so that's guy, the personnel ordinance says.
Right. That's what I'm asking about it.
Yeah. So all of our positions get posted for 30 days before we do any hiring.
Okay.
So, yeah. We, the, the amount of time, the attorney, the HR person and myself have said, oh, we got to, let's double check the personnel ordinance. Every, everything we do that goes through HR, that goes through attorney, this personnel related, we checked it. Uh, any questions, comments? Uh, any public comments? Please go ahead and raise your hand or come to the podium.
I don't see any hands raised online.
Seeing none, we will move on to administrative updates. Um, and we're going to start off with this, each, you, you guys have one to share over there. You have this one. We have a bit of a problem. Um, and I'll start, and I'm going to ask Director Bond to help me as I go because it's, all right. So first of all, you're looking at a map and the first thing to know about this map is that there are black lines that are property lines and they do not line up exactly with the aerial imagery. So just work with that. This is Spring Branch Drive. At the back of Spring Branch Drive where you see the cemetery, there is that triangle marked P284. That contains stormwater management facilities for the Town of Upper Marlboro. And to access it, there is an easement behind all of the properties. I do not know, none of us know the history of how this happened, but inside that easement are sheds. The homeowners have built fences around the easement. You'll see on, on your page, you've got stormwater infrastructure inside people's yards, uh, or how they fenced off their yards. We, that parcel 284 has become a hazard because it's, it's, it's unmaintained because we cannot maintain it because we cannot access it. And so it is all the, the things that property standards are there for, our own property is creating it. Um, Director Bond is working on alternate access. However, we have to have access to that in the long term. So we have to work with these property owners. We have to get them to move their fences. We have to get them to move their sheds. We especially have to get that concrete pad that's in parcel 284 out of there because it's impervious surface in a stormwater management area. So we need to come up with a plan to make this happen. Obviously, you know, you're a homeowner, you stuck up your fence, you stuck up your shed, it's been there for 10 years and all of a sudden the town is coming over and saying, actually, this is ours. So I am proposing that we create a plan, um, and that we first start by, by bringing in these five, six, five, I think, property.
And then meeting with them, right?
Um, to meet with them, explain the problem, explain that it's, it's going to have to happen and let's figure out how to work through this together. Right?
So we do, I have a question. Do we have sign easement agreement somewhere, stored somewhere?
So, I mean, we have to check the deeds, I guess. So we, we're going to have to have a survey done, like that's the other piece. We're going to have to have a survey done.
Cause the easement allows, allows you guys to, I mean, the town to go on the property to do what they have to do.
Right. But since it's fenced in, the only way for Director Devan to get on the property is to go onto the non-easement piece of the property because they have fenced our easement in. And that's what you're seeing in the picture. So it, it has to change. We have to reach out to these property owners and, and try to meet with them and resolve this. Um, but it's, it's a sticky situation because they have been in that easement for a really long time. And so I just want to, I, I, I'm going to ask Director Bond if I've missed anything in what I've said or my plan proposal.
At this point, the only other access we have is to, uh, create an agreement with the cemetery. And so we actually have to meet with them to even get, uh, permission to go through their fence to enter the property because that's the, the easiest plan of attack at this point, just so we can get that cleared up and to have.
Yeah. And if you look, you can see that there are grave sites very close. So it's not, it's going to be very tricky. Um, and Director Bond is working with the cemetery board to get us access, but it's, that's not a long-term solution. Um, and I know that, that, um, Um, and I know that, that, um, Spring Branch Drive is concerned about stormwater and being able to access the infrastructure is critical.
I'm gonna have to. Detail, uh, the issues that are resulting from not being able to access that. Uh, the, the main, uh, issue that we're having is in that, uh, that trapezies in, uh, P two eighty-four. There's actually quite a bit of animals that have taken up residence in there and that leads directly into the backyard, uh, for one of the homeowners who has young children. And on numerous occasions, uh, they reported that animals have, you know, come out, tried to attack the kids. So that is the, the, the main concern. Um, other than that, as far as the stormwater management, we want to get that vegetation out of there so it actually works properly with the amount of flooding that we have.
What kind of animals? Not that it's, it matters, it matter, but what?
From a misunderstanding, possibly.
So I just want to make sure we, do we feel like this is a good plan to, to set up a meeting? It's gonna be an open, public meeting because all of us will be there, but with these property owners.
Yeah.
Um, to work on a resolution, we are gonna have to budget for a survey. That's another reason those numbers are changing. Um, and, and move forward with that. I bet I want to make sure we're all, uh, of an agreement and don't have any.
So this has been going on since.
Was it like that when you got here? So Darnell's been here for ten years.
I know we've never touched it.
I don't know if we knew it was ours until the person who has that pad in P two eighty-sixty-four. Can't read it.
Two.
Two eighty-four. Um, had to buy it and we looked at it and we said, we actually, we can't sell it to you because it's a stormwater system and, and that's just not possible. And so I don't know how this never was realized, like, but worrying about that, in my opinion, is, is not the most efficient use of our moving forward time. So, um, problems have to be resolved.
So for, for to get there, some people already have built houses and we can't get around it.
Yeah, so in that blue line, like that, that should be open for us to access. That's where there's the fences.
Yeah, I would.
Like, see this, this is the stormwater infrastructure, this is in someone's yard. And this is the yard and that, so that's our infrastructure in someone's yard. The fences in the, um, easement, these, um, sheds here are inside the easement. These are multiple sheds right up against the fence and the fences in the easement. So we can't drive a motor in there.
Hmm.
Yeah. And so I feel like us just coming up with a solution and pushing it, that's something we could do. But I feel like it's five homeowners. Let's get them in a room. Let's have a conversation. I mean, long-term, yes, it has to be opened up for us to get in through there. If they got a shorter term solution for us to get through everyone's backyard, okay. But it has to be moving forward. Director Bond is, has been having that conversation. So, yes, we'll, and that, we'll have that access, I think, in the conversation. But that's not, like, long-term, we have to have this access. So. So we'll, we'll write a letter to each of these homeowners and try to schedule a meeting. Um, so we may be reaching out to you all for dates, or maybe we just haven't come to a work session.
Does this have to be dealt with? Is it possible?
Darnell had, well, Darnell's contractors have to be able to get in there, but he is working that from the other angle because I think it's unreasonable to go up to these people and say,
Oh, of course.
you need to move your shed tomorrow.
Yeah.
So we've got to work the other angle, but we have to create a long-term.
No, I'm just saying, um, I'm not, I'm just saying that it's not be dead.
We'll be, yeah, we'll have to be dealing with this, you know. Yeah, it's a priority to resolve the long-term plan. Um, but again, short-term solution to animal problems.
Because the one family has complained on numerous occasions.
One family's complaint, but also it's just, it's, it's unsightly, it's damaging the fences, the, the, um, cemetery. It's town property that's not complying with our own property standards ordinance. We have to, like, we just have to resolve that. We can't continue like that.
Just like you asked, and when did we discover? Then we, then that homeowner passed the first.
The property and we've been trying to work through, we thought we could just get through the church. We didn't necessarily have the co-compliance expertise at the time. Now that we have the expertise and he's been working with the county to get the advice and like, how we need to resolve it. It's been kind of like, it's there, but we don't know how we're supposed to resolve it. And we now have to be.
It was also some complaints there. That's what kind of helped.
Complaints, yes.
About the critters?
No, about vehicles being parked in the easement and then in the backyards. That's how the whole discovery of P.
Two eighty-four.
Four was like, oh, this is the town because, and then looking at the property, it's like, oh, this, these fences are in this easement. And so conversations with Director Bond and just brought it back up from a year where it was actually now a problem. It started to complain about vehicles being parked. The video of, uh, maybe this is on the, and or haven't been able to measure, but we're growing vegetation. Iron, you know, still, uh, I'd like mitigation or stormwater issues in the town. It's very hard to tell because we came to get in there to see. Or, yeah.
There are complaints about stormwater issues on Spring Branch Drive. Now, there's another piece of this problem, which not supposed to have two sheds on the property. That's, that's against the county code. So we'll have to have that conversation. But what that is, is two sheds is more impervious surface, which means more stormwater running off your property into these systems. So the system, the, the complaints about stormwater tie into the system not working, but also higher levels of impervious surface than were ever intended. So there's more stormwater going into all the systems than it was designed to take. So, okay. We, I think we have a plan moving forward for that. Does anyone have anything else on that? Shall we move on to any other administrative updates you guys have? We'll move on to other administrative updates, if you guys have any. Director Bond?
Well, we'll discuss it, uh, with Spring Branch Drive. Uh, N B M paving, will be paving Spring Branch Drive on May tenth, uh, and eleventh. That is a Friday and a Saturday. They fully anticipate to finish on, uh, May tenth. However, they wanted to, you know, issues getting, uh, back from the plant. We will come back, uh, that Saturday morning at eleven to fix up. Um, they are going to, you know, you, you will still have access to get in and out of Spring Branch Drive. However, you will, for, you know, when they're in front of your driveways, things like that. Once you see the crew sort of moving, if you need to move your vehicle, you will have to do so before they start pouring asphalt.
And you will be providing a letter to each homeowner with this information?
Yes.
Okay.
But here's where it sort of gets tricky. The portion that was paved by W S S C, uh, after the, um.
There's two portions.
After War Lane, right, yes.
Yeah.
Those sections will be seal coated and you will not be able to drive on those sections for twenty-four hours. So any vehicles in your driveway that you may need to move, you're gonna have to move further down the street to the paved section.
Can I ask a question? Are they seal coating both on the same day?
As of the plan.
Wow, because that's all the back loop. Okay.
Now, what I can do is I can attempt to, uh, break this up into separate days. However, you know, the way their schedule is there, they have us smacking in the middle of song house. So there's not a lot of wiggle. Even if we get rain on these days, they will have to reschedule us for.
It's not, it's not gonna rain. Um, so we need to do letters, but I would say that we also need to make sure that we are actually commu-, the people who are really gonna be trapped. We're gonna have to, and, and it may come on us to go on the weekend, um, as well. But I know you'll reach out during the week, but we got to make sure that every person who is going to be trapped or has to park somewhere else, they're gonna be, they're either gonna be trapped or they're gonna park elsewhere, is aware of that. The other piece that I'm concerned about is where all those vehicles are going to, so.
Well, if they have extra vehicles, I think we should offer up the town parking lot to help them, um, you know, while we take care, what we got to take care of. Like if you have more than one vehicle.
Well, they can always park at, anyone can park at town, park at, if you're getting a driveway paved and you need to park at town parking lot, you totally can do that. Anyone can do that at any time. And the school parking lot, but I'm concerned of the distance. I'm almost wondering if we want to ask their neighbors at Marlboro Town if they have, if they can park in some of the visitor-armed parking spaces.
Well, that's, that's, well, that's a longer distance.
Dun Town. Oh, you're right. You're right. It is. Yeah. Cause you can sneak around.
Plan is that the, the rest of it will already be paved by them.
Right.
So you can move your car to the paved sections.
Yeah, but so many people park on the street.
House, but it's.
I think people will kind of, uh, give you some allowance because they see this, the roads are getting done. I think people will be, as long as we give them notice, I don't see people having a big issue with it.
So you'll be getting those letters out before the end of the month and then.
Hoping.
Oh, by the end of this week, right? And then we'll just, we'll do a list of addresses and make sure that we're helping you with touch points if people aren't home during the week. Is that good?
Okay.
You can help them too. All right, any other administrative updates? I don't. I am working, oh yeah, we should talk about the police space because the revenues may be coming in higher. We can do the police space. I think we all agreed we were gonna do the police space if it can go in the budget. Was that correct?
Yes, they have, but yeah, if they're fine, I can handle it.
Yeah.
If it's not affecting the rest of the budget.
Yeah. So that's part of what's going in there. I just need to get, I think you were negotiating a price. I have an estimate, so I'd rather have a real price. Also, we have new employees to welcome. Do you want to welcome them or do you want to? They're not, they're not, but we'll be, we won't be swearing them in for a while because they're in academy. Any, you, you don't have any? Okay, all right, so I guess we're good. Uh, Clerk Oatsen, did you have anything? I know we've got some flyers and whatnot, but we had to do public comment too.
No, I'm good. Thank you.
Move on to public comment. Oh, sorry.
Go ahead.
And please just, just state your name and street for the record. We got to get back into doing that. Thank you.
Joe. Uh, Joe Urclay, Old Marlboro Pike. Um, in regards to fence issues, um, I noticed that there is now a taller fence, um, on Old Marlboro Pike between Elm Street and Service Lane. And you might want to check to verify that that complies with the town ordinance about obstructing sightlines at intersections. Um, it just seemed closer and taller, so it may not give the visibility needed. Um, also, um, the next board game meet group will be meeting the weekend, will be ne- next Wednesday, so not tomorrow, but the week after. However, will probably start at seven o'clock um, because I need to do setup for early voting. And early voting, uh, for the primary is, I believe, May second through ninth. For anyone who wants to do that, and then of course, primary will be the Tuesday after. So, thank you.
And I'm just gonna address this Marlboro, Elm, Elm and Marlboro fence because we have had, received numerous complaints and comments about it. Director Bond and I both provided multiple comments that the plan for the fence was not acceptable and there would be problems with the sightlines and the county permitted that fence anyway.
Well, the, the town actually has an ordinance specifically because of when someone put up a fence at Rectory at Old Marlboro Pike. So there are penalties for them having done so.
We'll look into that. Are there other public comments?
That's all I had online.
All right. Okay, so we are going into preliminary Google update meeting agenda. Um, I can actually read it, my new glasses. Uh, we have the draft ordinance twenty twenty-four oh one, F Y twenty twenty-five budget for discussion. Uh, again, twenty twenty-four oh two, F Y twenty twenty-four budget adjustment. So Personnel Ordinance twenty twenty-four oh two, and then the Church Street RFP, we should have submissions at that time for discussion. Um, do we want to add discussion of the Spring Branch Drive to this? Um, like, do we want to have internal discussion or do we want to just wait to add it to agenda until we're heard back from property owners?
I think that we should add this to the agenda so that we can start talking about it and invite people to the meeting so they can come and talk about it. We need to hear from them.
Okay. So we're gonna add the Spring Branch Drive stormwater to the agenda, Clerk Oatsen.
Got it.
Anything else? I mean, we're starting to get done with the budget, but I think we still are gonna have a lot to discuss about it before we start tackling the other stuff. Okay.
We're also adding the leave policy. We're also adding the, uh, Cummings contract and the, uh.
So the Cummings contract?
Yep.
And the, the leave policy, you're right. Yeah, and the template. The template, the contract template, the Cummings, yeah. Well, Clerk Oatsen will get it right and when we send it out to y'all. We have a work session the same time as the election. No one votes in here for that election.
Oh, fair.
Yeah, it's at, um, Union, Union United, I think. Yeah. I mean, I, I've been enjoying this mail-in ballot situation, um, but there's also early voting. Um, hopefully everyone has voted and, or by the fourteenth, though it's important.
Point of.
From May second to the ninth and then. So, all right.
Point of order, President Franklin. I do want to point out that there is a public hearing at seven o'clock that evening. The actual work session will start at seven fifteen, but the actual public hearing will be at seven o'clock. And I'll read the notice just so it's in the record. The town of Upper Marlboro, notice a proposed vacant property tax rate increase for the taxable year beginning July one, twenty twenty-four. The town of Upper Marlboro in Prince George's County, Maryland proposes to increase the real property tax rate for residential vacant properties from thirty-eight cents per one hundred of assessment uh, to one dollar and fifty per one hundred of assessment and commercial vacant properties from fifty-seven cents per one hundred of assessment to a dollar fifty per one hundred of assessment.
Thank you. Yeah, good call. Thank you for catching that. Okay, um, we'll move on to, I think you have some announcements. So cleanup is this Saturday, ten AM to two PM. I think we have about twenty people signed up. We also have some Pepco volunteers signed up. Uh, we are gonna be all over town, not just at the pond. If you are a volunteer at this, you get a cool gift. So you should sign up and show up. So you should sign up and show up. Um, hmm? Yep, um, Marlboro Day Festival and Parade, Saturday, June eighth. There are vendor signups, there are parade signups, there are, uh, volunteer signups. All of that is online. Um, so save the date, it's gonna be fun. And I think we're ready to adjourn. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So move.
Is there a second?
I think.
All in favor?
Aye.
All ayes, Clerk Cozen, so. Normally, we don't do a call, but we can do it for adjournments.
Got it.
Right, thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Um, I was gonna hang on to them.